Roll call. Okay, roll call. Pete McIntyre, Vice Chair.
Jerry Tominski, Member.
Steve.
Gary Schneider, Member.
Kate DePuma-Herbeau, Board of Ed, Member.
Wayne Donaldson, Ledger Public Schools.
George Ozzy, Member.
Steven June, Silver Petroselli.
Dan Hetzler, ONG.
Okay, welcome to the two committees, Mr. Ozzy.
Thank you. My apologies for my terrible video. Not sure what's going on there.
Well, you got sworn in today, so you're eligible for any of the voting, so just solemn member now. Okay. I'll intend a motion to approve the minutes for October 12th, 2021.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have directions.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Um, under Gales Ferry School, there's a bullet that says HVAC thermostat has not been replaced and monitor for radon system. And then it ends. It sounds like there was more to be said there. What about the monitor for the radon system?
Yeah, I think the comment might be to has not been implemented.
And that would be Gallup Hill, not Gales Ferry.
That's a good point, too.
Okay, so under Gallup Hill School. That's all I have. So is it? That's all I have. I don't have anything more. So I just have thermostat has not been replaced. I don't know. I just haven't monitored radar system. Does anybody recall? That's all I have.
Yeah, the radon was that we were still waiting for Johnson Controls to hook up the monitoring for it.
So maybe I'm supposed to say has not been replaced as well as the monitor. Okay, so I'm sorry, say that again, Wayne.
The radon, the monitoring for the radon by Johnson Controls has not been hooked up yet.
Okay.
And thermostat in room, I think at 148 was.
Yeah, we have this. Maybe that's what I was, you know, thermostat has not been replaced and the monitor for radon system has not been installed. Alright, so I'll go ahead and I'll change it to Gallup Hill.
Okay, under middle school, it says mold and condensation in gym has not persuaded. I'm not sure what that was meant to mean either.
I'm not sure either.
I said has not been pursued.
Oh, pursued. Yeah, still pursuing.
That's not persuaded, that's pursued.
Um, okay, in the minutes, it's persuaded.
I have P U R S U E D.
No, it's U A D here, Lisa.
Really?
Yep, honest.
Yeah, it says has not persuaded it.
Okay, my copy says pursued and that's what gets, I'll fix it, but yeah, I don't know. I can't explain that one.
And then in the sentence after that, it says Wayne stated they have found leaks in seams in roof units, small puddle, which is fine, but seams is spelled S E E M S. Normally, I wouldn't care about spelling, except in this case, um, it changes the meaning of the sentence from, you know, this, this suggests that there seems to be a leak, which is not the case. There is a leak in the seams as the A M S. That was it. Thank you.
Very good, George. Thank you. Still be amended, right, Lisa?
I got them all, yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, okay, as amended, will I approve the minutes for October 12th, 2021? Anybody else approve the minutes beside Pete McIntyre?
Yes.
Well, Gary had seconded it.
Okay.
You want us to go through the roll, Pete?
Sir?
Do you want us to each say our approval?
Yeah, this was approved, please approve the minutes for October 12th, 2021, as amended.
Kate DePuma-Herbeau, aye.
Gary. Gary Schneider, aye.
George Ozzy, aye.
Okay, this has been approved as written, as amended. Okay.
Excuse me one second, Pete. I see somebody else on. Um, did somebody else come into the meeting, sign in or?
As a, as a role player.
I don't know, I see an RJ Kelly.
Yes, hi, I'm listening in for a homework assignment.
Oh, okay, so are you a student?
I am a student. I also had a quick question, too. When these videos are recorded, where can I find these? Is there a part on the website I can find these meetings?
They're on the, um, it's the iCompass portal where the meetings and agendas are.
Okay. All right, cool. Thank you so much.
Okay, yep, you're welcome.
Okay, we're ready to proceed. Wayne, what do you have on the, uh, letter? To improve the progress, projects.
Um, we'll start with the middle school. Um, we haven't had much, well, basically, nothing has been, um, done there. We did come up with a couple additional issues. Um, the, um, there was a question on the roof drains on the gym area, uh, because we're getting a lot of water coming out the overflows. Um, that's usually, you should only get that when you have a backup in the main drain for some reason. Um, the, uh, that's going to cause a problem in the future with deterioration of the, the bricks and the mortar on the outside of the building. So Steve June is working on that. Um, Johnson Controls was out, confirmed that the jumper that was left on the, um, chiller should have been removed. Um, so they came out and, and, uh, addressed that and confirmed that the other contract that I brought in, um, was proper in removing that. Um, they also looked at the, um, B F D on unit three, uh, and confirmed that they will be, um, addressing that, either replacing it or bringing in parts depending on what A B B says on that drive. Uh, other than that, really haven't seen much, um, work undone. Um, Dan, I never got a response a while back. I had sent you out a, um, you and Cory, an email on the, um, computer stations in media center that were never electrically hooked up.
He didn't bring that to my attention.
Okay, I'll forward it over to you. Yeah, there's, there's desks of computers in there that were never powered. Um, they should, there's power outlets and stuff on them, but they never brought up from the, uh, uh, from the connections down on the floor.
Okay, so we'll have to see if that's a technology connection or if that would be, um, something, you know, that was bought in the base bit contract.
Okay.
If you have a photo of it, that would, it would help me.
Yeah.
Research.
I can take a photo. If I don't have one, I'll go get one. I'm sure I took one. I just gotta find it on my phone and I'll send it over. Um, that's pretty much what I have for the middle school.
Steve, what do you got on the middle school?
You're muted, Steve.
Sorry about that. Uh, yeah, as Wayne had said, we were out there last week, uh, taking a look at a few of the issues. Uh, the roof drain in particular, the two roof drains, um, or two sets of roof drains above the gym. Um, Dan had sent us an email or sent me an email saying that he was going to get the roof or a roofing contractor out there to take a look at some extension collars inside the overflow drain, because right now they're almost at the same height. Um, and then we looked at, uh, the ladder enclosure, which was installed in the mechanical room. It should have been installed in the stairwell for the new addition. And then, uh, Wayne and I had talked about, uh, the chill, the relief valve for the rooftop unit as well as the chiller, uh, geographically located. Uh, I'm working with Addy I'm at, and he's been out a few days, so I'll take back into that.
Thanks, Steve. Dan, Cory is still involved to this project?
Uh, no, he is not. Uh, I have a different superintendent that I've been working with that has been monitoring a little bit of the work that we have over at, uh, that we've done over at the Gallup Hill School. Um, and then he'll be riding herd on the, uh, on the work that we have pending over at Gallup Hill. Yep, his name is Scott Macy.
Okay, Scott, so Cory's no one wrong. Who's involved with the middle school? Anybody besides yourself?
Uh, well, Scott, Scott will be, um, there's one action item that we're going to self-perform over there. Um, and Scott will be doing that work.
What item is that?
What's that? That's the, uh, the chains on the poles for the window shades, for the blinds.
Yep.
Yep. I can do that on the 17th when we're out at Gallup Hill with the, uh, with the masonry cleaner.
Okay.
All right. And just to bring, uh, just to, the, the, the roof drain bowls, you know, like as mentioned, the overflow drain is only about two inches higher than the, the primary drain. And so I reached out to the plumbing contractor who's pipe, you know, who provided that drain body, uh, to see if there's an extension that can bring the, the pipe level up. As this, similar to what Steve mentioned.
Dan, you hear anything else on the middle school?
Um, nope, no.
Quick question. In light of September's issues, have there been any repeat, um, reports of mold or mildew auditorium, gym, any of that following all the rain we had last week?
No, there has not. Thank you. Roofing contractors were out, uh, to seal up, um, all the areas that, uh, were found with leaks. Um, I don't know where, maybe Dan, you can update us on action errors, um, plan to seal the roofs of those units.
Uh, that's gonna fall under J C I's warranty work. And so it's, I'd have to, I don't have an answer for you now as far as when they're going to be out or what action they're going to take.
Okay.
As, as Wayne mentioned, um, you know, the issue we had it reoccurring at, on certain rain events on the new addition, the three-story portion, uh, was found back about, uh, about a month ago. Um, and the roof counter flashing was installed on that, in those particular units. And then recently, over the last couple of weeks, the roofing contractors come out to install similar counter flashing on all of the units on the rest of the building.
Do you have any update on how we're going to deal with the invoices for that?
The trade is, is, is just not happy about it, but it's, um, it's out there as far as what they have. You know, there, it's, the timing was bad in that, you know, they didn't have an opportunity to come out and do the work themselves.
Well, at this point, I'm. This was something that Cory was supposed to have done back in May when I met with him.
Yeah, and we appreciate the fact that you were able to find, you know, with a water test where that condition was. And having the roofing contractor step up and, and, you know, do all the remaining units, uh, you know, roughly 600 linear feet of flashing was installed. But that's, you know, that's not relative to your point, which is, you know, there's a bill out there now that's, that's got to get paid for, uh, for the roof test and, uh, and this flashing work that was, that was done.
All right, we paid it. We just need to be reimbursed for it.
And, and we have the funds on greenwood roofing to, uh, to implement that.
Okay. Now, where do we stand on the rest of the ladders and hatches and stuff?
So the, the two items there that remain is the post-ups. Um, I've gone ahead and ordered those. I had to issue a letter to written in regard to that roof, um, the roof ladder that's at the stair tower that's, um, you know, on the far end of the building. The contractor's not, you know, he failed in his first attempt and, and that, that roof enclosure or that ladder enclosure wasn't up to snuff. Um, I've reached out to two additional miscellaneous metal contractors to get numbers, uh, to get the work done on the steel guy's behalf.
I, I did some research and basically somewhere between four to 900 bucks, you can buy the enclosure.
Well, that would be.
Having custom made, you know, they don't, doesn't have to be custom made.
No, they're, they're, they're a standard width. It's just the padding off the wall that would be unique.
Right, then they have those also.
Depending. If there's, um, you know, if there's a way out here that, that works around, um, you know, having the work done by anyone that's, that you might know or that, that would come in and do satisfactory work. You know, I have the, the value of those funds still withheld from the miscellaneous metals contractor.
We can get you the information tomorrow. And send it over.
Yep, okay.
All right.
All right, that's all I have for the middle school.
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Wayne, what do you got on the Gallup Hill?
All right, Gallup Hill, the, um, uh, again, we haven't had very much done out there. I don't know if, um, Johnson Controls has, um, hooked up the radon yet. Um, we do still have some leaks in the ceiling. Uh, in room two 24, I believe it was, could be off on the room number. Uh, this is the one we believe was coming in through the air conditioning units again. So, I mean, that's where we stand. Dan, do you have any update on the, uh, timeout room where that's being finished or updated?
I didn't get a chance to take a look or have Scott take a look at the painting that's required, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, more, I, I mean, I didn't think there was any painting left, but there might be, um, a moral look. Right now, they have a construction core in the door. Um, that had an existing core and everything on the other door, so the old locks that should have gone back on. I don't know what they did with it or where the core is that they took out the original door.
That core was one of the three cores that were, um, sent to you back when we, when we provided a few cores back a couple of months ago. So when I was told was that, that you were familiar and that, that you had the core and that you'd be swapping that core out with the change key.
Okay.
If you have.
That's fine. I thought those were for other things, but.
I know, she brought one extra for that from.
Okay. All right. So basically, and we're also getting that noise back in the, uh, in the piping. Now, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that this is, um, A C noise um, or cold water noise at this point. Um, because the teacher sent me two issues on Saturday, the 16th, when they were in there working, and one last Saturday. And I'm thinking that we're going back and checking the records in the B M S system. But I'm thinking that the, um, it was too cold to be running the chiller. So, I mean, I could be wrong. I gotta go back and find out what the temperature was those two Saturdays. I know it got fairly warm last, this past Saturday with the rain, so it's possible it did come on. Um, but the only thing is, we had that on bypass to keep the speed of that pump up. Uh, and we had just cut that back and all of a sudden the noise is back.
This is just on Saturday's, Wayne?
Um, this is the, the only time that she had complained or heard about it, but we hadn't. Uh, we had made some adjustments on, put that on a bypass, uh, cycle to allow, um, to, which seemed to eliminate the noise. We took that bypass cycle back off. And that's when the noise came back. So it really shouldn't be on bypass. It was like a temporary thing we did to, to try it.
I don't have any additional information on that. I know that the issue was noted and that the trade was out, uh, back in the early part of the year. And, uh, and then had two actions. One was to, to make an adjustment and then the second was to top off with glycol and both of those activities were done.
Yeah. I was not aware that they, I was just told by my, um, Bob, the guy that's basically managing it, that they had put it on an override. So I'm not sure why. So. I know he had been working with them on that, so I'm sure, I would suspect it was at the, uh, direction or agreement with, uh, J C I or Action Air.
Uh, so if we get any more information on it, we can, you know, we can take it back to the trade. I'm not sure what, you know, what the action there would be.
Uh, Wayne?
Yeah, where do we stand on the plantings? There were supposed to be a bunch of plantings that were being replaced. We're at the end of the growing season now. They did this last year and a lot of what they planted died.
Yeah, and I had that as an action item, Wayne. I have the four trees that we spoke to earlier in the season. Um, and I did not get, uh, an opportunity to follow up with her to see where, where the plantings were at.
Okay.
Too late to start planning?
Um, the trees are dormant now. You can, you can put them in. Uh, it's, it's past the optimal season of, of, you know, October 15th is, is pretty much the end of what would be optimal.
Yeah, that one's at the, uh, middle school blew right over, just in the storm.
Okay, we'll be, uh, we'll be by to check on those.
Okay.
Steve, you have anything?
You reviewed it, Steve, but I think that was.
I just realized that, yeah. No, I have nothing, nothing else.
Uh, so just, just to update Wayne on the, when the roofer was out, I had checked in the unit on Friday for that leak that you shared with me on Thursday.
Yep.
We did find a similar condition where the E P D M was not, uh, there, the PVC in this case was not up and tucked tight to the unit. So, uh, we have actually in, um, it's greenwood roofing that has the action to get back out. I checked with them today, but didn't hear back on when they'll be out to put in a similar, uh, termination bar and counter flashing on that unit.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? So I understand you, um, you asked them and you didn't, they didn't get back to you, but what would be your expectation? Are you expecting them to be out this week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, and then the other thing is the thermostat was now installed in that room 148.
Oh, good. Um, any news on the heating issue in that room?
Uh, that's in Silver Petroselli's court as far as coming up with a, with some alternative piping or, you know, source of heat.
Correct, and, uh, we are working on it. So I will follow up. Uh, I sent a mechanical engineer an email on Friday. I'll follow up, uh, after this meeting.
And I, I will also tell you that, um, we're finding where we've had a couple of thermostats that are bad. Um, that the temperature in the room is significantly different than what the thermostat is reading uh, and the system is reading. Um, and by changing the thermostat out with a new one, we were able to correct the issues in a couple of rooms at Gallup Hill. Uh, I don't know why we're having failed thermostats this early, but, um.
They've been, yeah, they, I mean, a lot of them in the portion of the building that was first renovated, they're at three plus years of service.
Right, this is not in that section. This is in the other, so it's about two years.
Two years of service.
Yeah. And the rooms are reading three or four degrees warmer than what the thermostat was. When we shot the temperature in the rooms. Right. And as soon as we put new thermostat on, it read exactly what we were shooting. So. It happens, but just be aware in case it continues.
Hey Wayne, have you coordinated with the new supervisors, Scott?
No.
Is that gonna happen, Dan?
Uh, yeah, they'll meet. They didn't get a chance, or when Scott was there a couple of times, um, he didn't run across Wayne. But I'm sure they will.
Let's just set up, up some way and get on the same page, please.
Yep.
Okay, Wayne?
Yes, please, thank you.
So tomorrow, actually, he was going to Gallup Hill to take some measurements for the, uh, additional pads that we talked about for the stage.
Yep.
Um, I'll find out what time he's headed over and, uh.
Yeah, just have him call me or. Let me know and I'll meet him there. It's not a problem.
Yep, that's the other thing I've, uh, I've made direct contact with, uh, with Northeast, uh, sports equipment to be providing those, those pads.
Okay.
Wayne, um, so when, if you said it already and I missed it, I apologize, but when you're replacing those thermostats, is that something that the schools are paying for?
Yes.
Okay, and how much do those cost?
I believe they're around $213 each.
And how many do we have in each school approximately?
Oh, gotta be 100 to 150.
Yeah, and I would expect them to last longer than two years. Is there a manufacturer's issue with those?
I don't know. Like I said, if, you know, we've had two, if we continue to get them, then I'll look into it. Um, I did get a couple of spare, I did purchase a couple of spares just so we have them rather than wait for them to come in, especially the way we're having problems getting material.
Okay, it just, that makes me a little nervous if we've got hundreds.
Yeah.
I mean, that adds up quick.
Yeah, and I don't know how many, seeing we just found this, um, Thursday, um, we haven't gone in and verified other rooms.
Okay.
So, you know, we need to go through and verify that the temperatures we're reading in the rooms are what we're seeing on the thermostats.
Is that some, I know that your, your team is very busy, but is that something that could be put on, on a to-do list to try to get ahead of it?
Yeah, uh, we'll get ahead of it. It's just, uh, we're concentrated on the rooms where we're having the constant complaints of heat or cold.
Okay.
We'll start with those, because that's most likely where the problem, where a problem would show up. Uh, and then once we get through those, we'll move on to the other ones.
Okay, yeah, because if it's going to end up being a lot of them, I, I'd rather identify it while we could still be in a reasonable window to do something about it.
Yeah. No, I agree.
Thank you, Wayne.
No problem.
Wayne, what's the manufacturer's warranty on those? What do we have as a warranty? Do you know?
I don't know. I gotta go back into the book, but I got feeling is everything else from Johnson Controls was a, a year to two years.
So we're probably, we're probably outside.
We're probably outside warranty on it, yeah. You know, I'll verify it and double check.
We're trying to check now, just to look through the cementals. If I find anything, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on Gallup Hill? Gallup Hill, please? You all set, Dan?
Uh, yep, our next activity is, uh, is bringing out a, uh, masonry contractor to wash some of the portions of the exterior masonry where there's fluorescent and put some sealer on. Um, and that I have scheduled for the 17th and 18th, uh, in the afternoons. Uh, coordinating with Wayne and, and that's when we'll pick up our self-perform work as well. A couple other little items that were on the list, the replacement of the exterior door handles, we hope are, are available, uh, on that date. There was one other thing I would have to check, but we're gonna, you know, we'll put the resource on the site again on that date.
I, um, while you're checking into things, can you also check with Park Rowway? Um, I talked with, uh, Bill Peterman from, uh, the, was the vendor for all the hardware, door locks and stuff. Um, and he said he had shipped, uh, Park Rowway complete, um, arms for the closers to replace everyone in the building. And they didn't when they came out. Um, so he was following up with them also.
These were the hold open.
Yeah, the hold.
So no, there was a list of 48 that we replaced. It wasn't, it's not every door. It's the doors that were specified to have hold opens.
Okay, well, some of the ones that were specified don't have them. Like classroom doors.
You'd have to be specific. I mean, we checked a couple of times.
16.
Room 116?
Is one, yeah, but there's multiple classrooms that did not get the new arms. If I need to go through and make another list, I will.
Um, I can, you know, I. I can, you know, I had, I had Corey do that as well. It's, you know, I was, had the, the trade down there when they were doing that and checking out rooms. So if, you know, if you're aware of them, you know, let us know, but I.
I will get the list together.
That's all I have, Pete.
Okay, going on, got a couple of change orders that are basically been updated. A change order number two twenty-eight ONG industry for Gallup Hill. In the amount of two thousand, negative two thousand two hundred and fifty-five, five dollars for site work allowance.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Feedback to her eye?
Jerry Tyminski, aye.
Steve Munger, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Kate DePama Herb, aye.
George Jose, aye.
Okay, been approved, change order two twenty-eight is approved, as moved. Change order number two twenty-four for ONG for Gallup Hill School for. For zero dollars for high vac independent verification. I'll move that we will accept that in change order.
I'll second that.
Dan, do we have to do the zero ones to close them out?
Yeah, the reason I produce this zero dollar document is to, whenever I move funds from a trade contractor to the general conditions for ONG. I make sure that there's a, there's a committee action.
Oh, so there were moves within, okay, I understand.
Yeah, this was, this constituted Action Air's acceptance of the back charge for the costs for the additional balancer. And then JCI to assist in that balancing operation that we did earlier this spring.
Okay, this gives you an audit trail. All right.
Yep.
Hey, all in favor of approving change order two twenty-four? So, feedback, feedback entire eye? Jerry Tyminski, aye.
Steve Munger, aye.
Kate DePama Herb, aye, and Gary, I think you were on mute, but I saw you say it.
I read his lips. Okay, motion's approved, change order been approved. Going on, we have a couple of invoices, okay, and date and cake to grab it there. Okay. We have motion to approve sustainable engineering solutions. Invoice for. Thirty-one sixty for letting it rid of school to bring them out of one thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty cents.
Covering what?
Of what?
Covering what?
For occupancy and operations things.
So this is the closeout invoice from your commissioning agent, Sustainable Engineering Systems. This is an invoice that's been tabled for a couple of months here, awaiting a final report from SES. We've been pilling some phone tag. I received an email earlier this week. Now, earlier last week, in which, you know, he responded to me saying that he was ready to, to sit down and meet. I responded to him, you know, offering that what we need to do is really try to sit down on both the projects. So that I can get some contractor base involvement. At this point, the invoice is, is really in suspension until we have that sit-down closeout discussion.
So Dan, you want to table this right now?
Well, you'd be, you haven't gotten what your final report, which is really what, you know, that invoice represents.
Okay, so that you'd answer the question.
Dan, has anything, I'm just asking because of all the emails, some of them I forwarded to you and Wayne last week. Must be someone from the accounting. Has that date been sent? Because she's going to email me again tomorrow to see what happened today.
No, the.
Any information I can give her?
Just that, that, that Walker and I haven't had a chance to pick a date in which we can sit down and meet.
Okay. So this is eight, I'm gonna second the motion just so that this discussion can go against an actual motion. Even if we vote not to approve the invoice, I want to be able to get the discussion on the record.
Yeah, I approve the motion, Dan.
Yep, and Kate just seconded.
All in favor?
Well, so I think with our discussion, maybe we're saying that we don't want to approve payment.
Yeah. Well, we don't want to prove it. We want to table it until we get the report. Yeah. That's exactly right.
Okay, so could we put that we had a discussion and, and determined to table it, put that in the minutes?
That'd be good choices.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, who's that coming to the final report? You?
Uh, no, it's actually the commissioning agent is your third-party owner's representative, so they, they would issue the report to the, to the town.
It comes to, to us then.
Yes.
Okay, one other motion to prove AIA application number thirty-five for ONG and industries for Gallup Hill School. The amount of. Fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Did you, I'm sorry, Pete, there's one, there's the AIA application for SPA for the six hundred and seventy-nine.
I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay.
Yeah, this motion now is for the ONG.
Okay.
And what is covered in this fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-eight cents?
It's just, they're just their expenses up to this monthly expenses right there.
Yeah, there's actually.
Yeah, on the.
We performed some additional work that the trades, that, that the trades are billing for. Specifically in here is the door work that's been ongoing through the summer and, and now recently culminated in a door replacement to the cafeteria. And the, that safe room that Wayne and I were speaking to earlier. And then there was some flooring and one, one guy's contract had four hundred and eighty-seven dollars left. And then there was painter that had come out and done some work above and beyond the contract to wrap up some punchless work. So you have two trades that, that are now closed out in the, in the, in the list of trade contractors.
Thank you.
Motion's carried. We have a motion to approve AIA application twenty-one dash twenty-sixty-nine for Silver Petricelli Associates. For the Gallup Hill School in the amount of six hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Um. I'm sorry, who, I don't have a second for who, from the last, the AI, from the last, the ONG invoice? Did somebody second that?
Yeah. Yeah. No, Jay said it, you should second it first time, didn't you?
I'm sorry.
But I'll second it now.
Okay, thank you.
Do we want to vote on that one then, the payment to ONG?
I would do a roll call, please.
Hey, feedback entire eye?
Jerry Tyminski, aye. Gary Schneider, aye.
Steve Munger, aye.
Kate DePama Herb, aye.
George Jose, aye.
Okay, motion's carried. Okay, motion to prove AIA application number twenty-one dash twenty-nine, twenty-sixty-nine for Silver Petricelli Associates for Gallup Hill School. The amount of six hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
This is Kate DePama Herb, I'll second.
Feedback entire eye? Jerry Tyminski, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Steve Munger, aye.
Kate DePama Herb, aye.
George Jose, aye.
Okay, motion's carried. Okay, that takes care of all the things. Kate, you're set if you need to get out of here.
Hey Kate, are you still there, Kate?
Yep, I'm here. Yeah.
I just want to wish, I just want to wish you luck tomorrow.
Likewise.
Okay.
Good luck to you too.
Good luck.
I'm gonna hang on for a few minutes. The next meeting doesn't start till six and I'm sitting in the room where it, well, I purposely came here so that I wouldn't have to rush out, so I'll hang with you guys for about ten more minutes.
Okay. Hey, just to let you know, I did some digging into the warranty for the automatic temperature controls.
Okay.
And it is twelve months. I did send the snippet off to Wayne. I, I could read it if you want, but it's, it's twelve months.
No, I, I believe you. I just, it's, if it just ends up being those two, maybe it's a fluke, but i- if Wayne's team determines that it's more than that, I, I feel like maybe we need to check and see if there's something more to it. Is at two hundred and thirteen dollars a pop, that's gonna add up if there's a lot. And if the next, that only, only lasts two years, then we're, we've got a long road on these.
Yes, understood.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. This is Ledger High School track and field project.
Before we leave the building projects, I just want to let you know that. I did finally get into the state website, so I have all the documentation of what has been paid to the town and all, and Marcia has it.
That's. Okay, what's the status on the high, high school track and field projects, Wayne?
We're just waiting on. The contractor to give us the final paperwork on it, so we can release the final payment, about fifty-eight thousand. I did talk to Eric Rossi. Rosie, who was the project manager on it for Castle Blues. And they, he expected it to be about two, two to three weeks. It's just about that amount now, so I will follow up with him again in the next week or so. And have him follow up with the contractor.
Is there anything on the, on the? Your scoreboard, Wayne?
My understanding, though I can't, I don't, haven't seen any knowledge that they, whatever money was left, was taken back by the town.
So the scoreboard is done.
That's my understanding, that we'll put it in under the capital for, for next year.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, Gales Ferry and Ledger High School summer projects, Wayne?
Okay, I updated those last time. We're getting in the final. Couple of final invoices, the. The tile work in the faculty bathrooms at the high school is just about finished. He hopes to have it finished tomorrow. So I can get the plumber in to reinstall the fixtures and we get those open. And everything else is pretty much closed out. I will have the final numbers, I'll excel sheets for you guys for your next meeting.
Great, thanks, Wayne.
Yep.
Okay, funding for the Ledger High School auditorium, Wayne?
Uh, that's kind of on hold right now, because I don't know where that's going. When we did the BMS project for Gales Ferry. And we issued the contract, I sent it over to Marcia for a PO. And I got back saying, okay, how's the board of ed going to pay for this? This was a capital project from the town, so I'm not sure why that came back, so. I haven't gone any farther. I informed Steve of this and he was gonna look into it, so I don't know if he made any progress or. You know, she basically, I guess the town only goes out the bond in May and was planning on the project being done after that point or something. So it's kind of been a holding pattern. I haven't, the, the bid is ready to go out to bid. It's just a matter of. You know, if we do that, as the fund's gonna be there to start the project and pay the contractor.
Okay, Katie or Steve, you got, Steve, you got anything else about this, those? Is that daughter joint project?
No, I'm good.
Do you, okay? Steven? Well, Steven, no? Okay, I make a motion to return.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Bye. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks, guys.